I was just going to say, and that's been the problem with this entire complex, which is what we continue here, complaints from residents, whether it's boarded up windows, whether it's, you know, furniture stores that-
Going out of business.
-going out of business, et cetera. It's been, ever since, it's probably been 10 years, that San Bruno Ford was no longer given a long-term lease. And GW Women's has wanted to develop this site for many years. And so, many tenants in that complex have been frustrated with that complex for many years, not making any upgrades, not making any improvements, and giving them sort of short-term leases, which is not the way anybody successfully wants to run a business, so.
Understood. Thank you. Go ahead, Marty.
I have another question regarding the parking for Victory Honda, which apparently leases a number of spaces. And when this project goes away, those employees are going to have to park somewhere, and they're probably going to park in the neighborhoods near Linden where Victory Honda is. And I was wondering if we can, the email I received said something about it being part of their conditional approval for Victory Honda. So the consequence of this project on Victory Honda's parking, I wonder if staff is aware of any of that?
Yes. I do want to caution us by going down the line and trying to address individual tenant issues. We typically do not assert ourselves in landlord-tenant issues. And I think it's important to realize what we're talking about. We're talking about a substantial redevelopment of the parcel. And should that happen, there are a number of businesses there that need to find additional locations. There have been a number of those businesses that have reached out to us. Some of those we have information on. Others, we have given referrals to say, maybe go look here. As you know, one of the things we frankly don't have, because we don't have the resources, is an economic development manager that can help with small and medium business retention. And so that is a position that we would love to have, ongoing resources, be it additional property tax or additional revenue to fund that position, to help out with business attraction and retention. But we were not able to accomplish that during this budget cycle. Specific to Victory Honda, I do know that they are leasing the Mike Sato lot, and they have shifted a number of their cars there. Absolutely, there are a number of tenants at the Mills Park site that need to find other arrangements should the project go through. And I think the developer has been doing what most developers would do, is when you're going through the entitlement process, you don't have long-term leases, you gradually go through a process of shortening your lease terms. So if you do have an approval, you can go through the building permit process and break ground. And absolutely, that comes with challenges and businesses needing to find relocation. But I would just caution us, going through individual emails and talking about solutions or potential, because I don't know that that is germane to the project approvals that's before you tonight.
That was my last one. On impact, so, yeah, I've got plenty still, but go ahead.
Okay. I have a question that I want to address regarding the construction concerns. I've heard a number of residents bring up concerns about, you know, my home was built in the 40s and with the pile driving, et cetera. So, yeah, I would be concerned as well, right? I think that the construction time and the hours is kind of an agreed thing, and we know that we're not going to be bothering residents during, before the 7:00 AM. But what happens when a resident has an issue with construction, right? My home's just fine, all of a sudden this construction starts across the street, and now I've got rodents that are coming around that I never had before, because we know when you're digging up dirt like that, you're going to, all sorts of things, critters come up. Or I now have cracks in my fireplace that I didn't have before. How do all those sorts of things get addressed?
Sure, absolutely. There's an agreement for a project manager and a hotline and a newsletter, and I think it's most appropriate for the applicant developer to respond to that.
So this question has been asked at a couple of meetings, and so there's multiple things to address. There's one, the hours of operation, which the city establishes, and that relates us to noise, dust, and whatnot. There's a pre-construction setup, if you will, where you start to put up screen fencing, quite frankly, dust fencing and whatnot. And then also, vermin control is a critical part of that, and that goes hand in hand. So it's a complete package of interface for both demo, reconstruction of Keynes Avenue, and building of the buildings. We added a condition of approval with staff to help us have as much flexibility as we could to mitigate these types of things, both operational and the dust and the noise and the vermin, because the mice are a big part of that. So the city manager is correct, there's a project manager name, 24-hour number posted on both sites. It starts with the demo at the very beginning. It will go through the infrastructure, is what we call a make-ready, which is all the undergrounding and whatnot, and that's where you're going to get the most of the vermin. And then it goes into the vertical construction as well. So there's always a name and a phone number available, posted on the site. And if you go to any site now on El Camino Real that's under construction, you'll see the same thing. So it's tightly defined, it's tightly controlled, and that's how you deal with the onsite.
Sorry, I just wanted to follow. So, communication is great and key, that's what, you know, is most important. But what is the turnover, what is the expectation? So, I'm frustrated, I do call, I do email. What is the response time? How quick are we looking, and what's the reality?
Well, there is a 24-hour number. Anecdotally, you always get, obviously, a few people that will constantly want to call, so you do the best you possibly can. But it's typically within, in less than 24 hours, you get a response. Obviously, if you're in violation, your condition is approval, then it's immediate, because then the city gets involved. But if somebody's calling and saying, hey, look, I'm getting too much dust, or something like that, the posted onsite construction manager should immediately, you know, within a business day, address that concern with a water truck or whatever mitigation is necessary.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Laura. All right, Marty.
Noise and vibration. So we had a couple, and Laura did also bring it up. So is there a screening that you were going to do in inventory, or is it, you rely on the custom, or the neighboring resident to provide their own documentation before something is damaged, so then there's a claim? I can tell you, when I came to San Bruno, when Bart was coming through, and that was part of my job, is to monitor noise and vibration. And vibrations are really interesting, how they can concentrate in certain areas. So what we didn't do then was, it was totally up to the property owner to come back and say, hey, there's a crack in my, on my plaster, and, or there's something wrong with my chimney. And then the problem was, well, prove it. When did it happen? It was in a pre-existing condition, or whatever. So there was some analysis, I guess, on one of the reports, talking about noise and vibration. But what is, to address the concern that our residents have that are nearby, what is the plan to deal with vibration?
For a project of this design, at the start, they'll go out and survey the edge condition, so that you establish baseline data. So that, there is proof during the construction stage that pile driving, or the grading, or whatever, doesn't impact the grades, settlement, those types of things. So there's empirical data that's established at the beginning, and is monitored through construction. So they'll take, like, let's say, the top of curbs on Linden, to make sure those aren't moving as a result of the digging adjacent to it. They'll take the top of curb, or the top of pavement along White Way, so that there's a control during the heavy construction, digging of the holes, pouring of the concrete. So that kind of addresses the integrity of the soils, if you will. So there's, somebody is alerted to that, and that's our responsibility to establish that, because that defends us. Typically, you will have dust abatement, you have coupons for house washing, car washing, things like that. Those are community outreach things that are very good. Luckily, this site is 100% asphalt, so we're not going to be grading an orchard first before we start construction, and it is faced. So we have a north and a south block that can be used for staging all on asphalt, so that's a big plus. But when they actually start digging the hole, there's typically going to be dust abatement and outreach as part of that. As the city manager said, there's a news note, and typically, if somebody has an adjacent pool, you have a pool cleaning service that you can rely on to help somebody out. So those are the two things. I can't answer the exact empirical question as it relates to vibration, because I just don't know that. I'd have to come back to you. But I'm sure we have a condition of approval that requires us to mitigate that, but I just don't know what the exact answer is to that part of it. So dust, grading, settlement, those types of things, those are scientific, if you will, for lack of a better description.
Does staff have any comment on how to deal with claims with people saying their house has been damaged by the vibration?
So I think part of what we're doing is, we're going into a line of questioning that has to do with the actual construction of the property, and what the mitigation measures will be for the encroaching permit, and what the actual process will be for contacting the onsite manager and response times. Certainly, we will attempt to represent the homeowner and escalate the matter with the developer/owner. We do that now with construction projects. When a homeowner comes up and says, hey, I've complained, I'm not getting a response, we'll escalate it and try and get a response.
Just to point out, there's a whole series of conditions in here, so we have to water twice daily. I mean, and the length of time that they'll be exposed dirt is pretty de minimis. It's the amount of time to grade, put the foundation in, and in essence, pour the concrete over it. So it shouldn't be months and months of grading activity. So we have to do dust control measures, we have to post our project superintendent's name or responsible person. We also have to post the hotline number for the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. Folks can call there, they're ultimate regulator of air quality. So they can call us, they can call the city, they can call the district. And in terms of the vibration, basically, there's best management practices that we'll be putting in place, and there's maximum noise and vibration standards that would go into the building permit approval process.
Got it.
Based on the exact type of foundation, which we haven't, the foundation isn't designed, it's conceptual at this point. So as we work through the city plan check process, the building permit process, and with our consultants and city staff and/or outside consultants for city staff, that will be designed and will put in place the best practices at that time.
Got it. I just wanted to be able to address the question from the public. I know we're getting into pretty detailed questions, but I think they're worth noting. So I'll continue. What are the plans for solar lighting, our solar energy? Is there plans for all electrical appliances?
So the plan would be to A, install solar panels, B, to have all-electric appliances. There probably would need to be gas for the retail uses down below. Typically, the kitchens and restaurants need gas. And determined yet, as it relates to the heating and air system. But the very least, all of the appliances would be electric, which candidly is the vast majority of the energy usage.
Got it. And so with the plans to put in solar, do they, they're pretty flat, and so the screening of any of the HVAC or anything like that, what impact will that be for the residents to be able to see that? Because we do have allowances for that in our project-
Yeah, they should-
...and the height.
I can't say that they wouldn't see it anywhere, but it should be very minimal, if any, visibility. It wouldn't be on the lower levels, it would be on the-
Right, 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 right.
-on the top level.
For the solar, that-
Yes.
But for all the other-
It would be on the roof, too. And I think the things that would be visible are ones that were shown up there, which are the elevator shafts. And again, I think it'd be de minimal of any of the HVAC equipment.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question. Clarification on height. We keep hearing this, it's 80 feet, it's 70 feet. So it's 70 feet, and there's really only two elevator shafts, one on each building, that will extend the additional 10 feet.
You are correct.
Thank you.
And that's only from the El Camino side.
Right.
It's 57 or 8 or 9 feet on the White Way side.
Right. Another question to staff. Question was raised that how can an EIR approved in 2013 be used for this project?
So, the EIR did both a sort of analysis of today, but also a cumulative analysis, which was looking 20 years down the line. So that horizon is still valid, right? And like I said, we're about five years into the TCP, or six years, but we've only approved a really small amount of projects. So if an EIR is at the point where you're reaching the build-out levels, or you're exceeding it, so for example, this project pushed us over 16 and 10 units, we would do a different kind of analysis. But because we're under the build-out number, we're only a few years in, it, we hired, the city hired our CQ consultant, and the city prepared the study, and the findings were that the EIR analysis was still valid. Now, many times the question is, well, how many years is an EIR valid for? That's debatable, but generally, they're good for, you know, 10, 15 years. There has to be really the threshold that you're exceeding that build-out number, or conditions have substantially changed. And that, we've studied, we did a very thorough initial study checklist, and that was not the conclusion that was reached.
So, since I've got your attention, another question. So there was a comment made by Commissioner Mason that said that the project that the commission approved, which was a 5-0 vote, is not the same thing that's been brought to us as at council tonight. So I was confused in that comment.
I don't believe she said that, it was another, it was a gentleman that was, made that statement, according to my notes.
That's incorrect. The same project is before you tonight. We revised the initial study checklist, for example, to address some questions that were raised. But the project itself, the plans have not changed at all.
Great, thank you. And to our city manager, so a few months back, maybe not even a few months, it seems like maybe only a couple months ago, that it sounded like there was a consensus with council, that we talked about a notification process. And we continue to hear this at different meetings and different discussions, that residents don't feel like they're informed. And so we've asked for a notification process that we would come back and review, and come to an agreement on the boundaries that we would notify, as well as, what are all those other things that we're going to do to notify residents? So just kind of want to, if you have any updates on that, or do you know when that might be coming back to council?
Sure. I do not have a date for when it's coming back to council, but you are absolutely right, council asked for it. Our standard notification practice is 300 feet, that's what's in our municipal code. For the transit corridors plan, it's 600 feet. And so that's why I think some residents know that some projects are at 3, some are at 600 feet. What we want to do is, we want to take a holistic look at all of our projects and how we notify. What council also asked is, are there additional notification methods, frankly, more modern methods than just sending a card to every house? And we committed to look into that. And so we're still doing that. But we want to frankly have some rationale and a standard, because you can always say, oh, well, it should be further, it should be 1,000, and we heard here tonight from a resident, it should be the entire city. And so we have to have something reasonable. The citywide mailing is roughly about $6,000. And so there are city projects that comply with that, there are developer projects that comply with that. And then we also are taking a look at the conflict of interest rings, because historically the ring was 500 feet. For council members, now it's, for some projects, it's 1,000. So do we want to align to that? And so we're just taking some time-
Okay.
...to come back and give you a thorough recommendation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that answer, because kind of, I am looking forward to being able to give a wider notification process, and I think a minimum of 1,000 seems to make sense. But I'll continue on with my questions. The EIR, and I looked through the findings, and finding number 21, that the general appearance of the proposed building structure or grounds will be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, will not be detrimental to the orderly and harmonious development of the city, and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood. That's the finding. And that's what staff is saying, that that's correct.
Yes. So-
Because that's-
So this development, while I understand that there are residents that do not like that it is five stories, it is compliance, it is in compliance with the transit corridors plan, that again, was adopted by 68.2% of voters, that said, that increased heights in this area to five stories. And so, we-
Do you have a vote on that?
It was a November-
It was on the election, yes.
-2014 election, and it passed in a democratic process with 68.2% of the vote. And so the question is, does the project as proposed comply with the character and the character of the city? The answer is yes, because it complies with what, 68.2% of the voters said they want it for their community.
Do you have questions?
No. I get that, part of it, it's just that, when I read that, and I'm having difficulty agreeing with it, based on the size, by the density- -by the traffic impacts. And that's what I'll lead into next, is I have, I have serious issues with the traffic impacts. I have issues with the original development of the environmental impact report on the traffic. I did share that at my meeting. And was, is there a, one of the consultants regarding the traffic in attendance?
Yes, there is. So if you have specific questions about the traffic, they're available to answer those questions.
So, in the EIR, March 2012, page 1419, second bullet, if an existing state-operated facility is operating at less than LOS of C, level of service, the existing LOS should be maintained. Caltrans staff has indicated that Caltrans considers any increase in traffic to a state-operated facility, operating at an unacceptable level of service, is considered a significant impact. So, this is my first rodeo for EIR. All right, I'll admit that, but I'm a quick learner, and it's really, really late, but that's okay. So, help me understand, if it says here in the EIR, if that's a significant impact, why aren't we doing a full EIR on the traffic?
So I mentioned this in my presentation, that the EIR disclosed that was a significant, unavoidable impact. The council, at that point, when they certified the EIR, adopted a statement of override. And again, because it's a state-owned intersection, specifically San Bruno Avenue and El Camino Real, the city has, does not have the ability to make changes to that. But the city went through the process that it does when you have a significant unavoidable impact under the law. So this project doesn't make that finding different or worse, because the analysis that led to that conclusion included build-out of up to 1,610 units. And again, this project doesn't push us over that threshold. So the finding remains the same. And the real purpose of an EIR is to disclose the decision-makers of the impacts. It doesn't mean you have to, you know, you have to not approve projects. If there's the disclosure of that impact, and the city has done what it can to mitigate those impacts and examined alternatives through the EIR process and decision-making process, then the city has the ability to still approve projects.
Or the ability to deny a project.
Well, again, the EIR was certified, and so under-
Right, right.
...CQ, the finding is that this is compliant with that EIR. And if that's your question, whether you can deny it, there's a different conversation.
No, no, I'm sorry. It's just here in black and white, but I'm just trying to understand that it's written that way, and because it's been identified as being something that can't be over, or mitigated, then it's just getting worse. Which it is getting worse, based on, so that was the EIR, right, for the transit corridor plan, and then we have the analysis based on the traffic study of the increase in the wait times at the intersection.
Correct. And so the project would increase the delay at the intersection.
Right.
It would increase the delay, consistent with the increase in delay under the transit corridor plan and the general plan build-out. So again, what the traffic study said is that the, that impact remains an unavoidable significant impact. So again, it was disclosed, this project doesn't make it worse, or doesn't change that at all. So the finding remains the same. And when the council certified the EIR, they knew that. It was, it was made public, along with other significant unavoidable impacts.
Just make sure I understand. So it's unavoidable impact then, in the EIR, and it is getting worse?
No. It's not, well, it's not getting worse than what was disclosed and analyzed and made public through the EIR. There's not a substantial increase in the severity of that impact.
Okay.
It's the same impact. It's probably even a little bit less, because again, we're not even close to reaching the maximum build-out under the general plan, and we're not, or the transit corridor plan. So when you think about traffic, it's all based, but it's all created by people, and new construction primarily, and changes in the conditions. But this impact is not getting worse with this project.
So the, so the, and we talked about this earlier in our meeting, about trip generations that are identified of how these studies are generated. And on page 1427, I quote, they're referencing the Trip Generation Handbook, and here's the quote, "This method has some shortcomings, and that is based on a limited sample size of three mixed-use sites in Florida. It is not recommended for town center projects such as the land use changes proposed in the transit corridor plan. It is limited to three land use types, residential, retail, and office, and it does not take into account the influence of nearby land uses." So that's in the draft, Transit Corridor Plan EIR.
Yeah, but if you keep reading, you'll see that what it says is that there was the mixed-use development trip generation model, which was developed by Fair and Peers, which was used to refine those trip generation estimates-
Right, right.
...and get them to be more similar to what you would expect under a mixed-use development in the Bay Area.
Got it.
And that is the standard that's used for this type of project.
Right. I was going to get there.
Yeah, good.
But in the draft Mills Park mixed-use development impact, or traffic impact analysis, it mentions the- it mentions the same thing, but it doesn't add in the MXD trip generation that you just referenced.
Yeah.
I'm looking at page 29. So I'm concerned if we're comparing apples to apples.
So we can get the traffic engineer up here, but the MDX model typically reduces the trips. So if anything, I would say that the ITE Trip Generation Command, which was sort of the base, is more conservative and has higher trips, whereas the MDX model tends to bring trips down. But he can clarify this. This is the city's consultant.
My name is Abhav Nakhal. I'm a taxicar transportation consultant, and our company produced the traffic impact report for this project. And what you were saying, that is correct. It is typical when you do a project-level analysis such as this one, there are guidelines and standards and criteria that are set forth by the Contestive Management Agency, CCAC, as well as the City of San Bruno, on how to do a traffic impact study for this particular project. And for that project, we typically use ITE rates, which are more conservative than the rates that are used in the MDX trip generation process. So it would result in more conservative estimates of traffic.
So following up on that, the additional, the cumulative projects that are going in around San Bruno currently with the Bay Hill specific plan, that data is going to be added to your analysis? Is that...I wasn't able to locate that.
Yeah. The way this works, we look at two different, actually, three different scenarios. One of this scenario where we look at the existing conditions, existing traffic counts, and put the project traffic on top of that. Another scenario is, which is more relevant, I think, is we look at, we do the existing counts, we look at the existing conditions, then we add to that traffic that will be generated by projects that are already approved by city council but have not been constructed yet or occupied. So we know that traffic will be generated by those projects. We'll add traffic to the transportation system. So we add that layer of traffic to the traffic counts, and then on top of that, we put the traffic from this particular project on it, and then we do the analysis. So there are, I believe, five projects when we started the study that were already approved but have not been constructed, and we took those five projects into account in our traffic analysis. So the traffic that will be generated by those projects are included in our traffic analysis.
But Bay Hill, you're saying Bay Hill?
I can cord him for you if you have a minute, if I can find the memory board. At the time that the traffic study was conducted, when we took in the information that was provided by the city, were five projects, 1250 Grundy Office Development Project, 406 San Mateo Avenue Mixed Use, Crossing Hotel, San Bruno Dialis Clinic Office Development, that's right next door, and 111 San Bruno Avenue Mixed Use Development. Those were the projects that were, at that time, approved but not yet constructed.
Right. So 1250 Grundy is the SF credit union?
Credit union.
So it doesn't include the pretty much anticipated increase?
Well, we're talking about two separate things. So we are currently undergoing a specific plan for an intensification of office development on the Bay Hill Office Park. That is a project that is ongoing. We are studying the EIR preferred alternative. We will be getting that information back, and we have an update on that project on July 31st at a, I believe, a joint meeting of the city council and the planning commission. So were those impacts identified? No, that wasn't even a project then. I will say that as we are looking at those impacts, the major tenant there has one of the best TDM practices of almost any corporation because of the amount of people that take the shuttle buses there. And so I would hazard for you to make any conclusions on to this project based on a EIR that is ongoing and you don't have that data in front of you. This project is tiered off of the EIR that was done when the Transit Corridors Plan was enacted. I think it's also important to let step up on the balcony at a policy level. We all know anecdotally, traffic is increasing, right? So we know, we do nothing, traffic is increasing. We also know that when the EIR was done, it said if you add 1,610 housing units along the transit corridor, traffic also gets bad. This project is 425 of that 1,600, so it's within that boundary. The policy question that's before council is building 425 units in this area in compliance with the Transit Corridors Plan and acceptable entitlement. And so absolutely, traffic is getting worse. It will get worse with the TCP, and with this project, the traffic counts go up. But the whole plan of building transit-oriented development is to build housing, desperately needed housing, along the transit corridor. In addition, at 25 units, this is not the largest complex in San Bruno. You have the Crossings at over 700 units. You have Shelter Creek at over 1,200 units. You have Peninsula Place at 872 units. And this project is better parked than those projects, and it's in the transit corridor. And so that's the whole point of the transit corridor, is we all know we need to build housing. We all know that this region has had an explosive growth in jobs. So where are we going to build housing? What the community said is, you know what? We're going to build along the transit corridor, because we want housing closer to jobs, closer to transit. And so that is essentially part of the project that is before you today, is a project in the transit corridor that fits within the boundaries of the EIR.
No, I just still comment. I agree with you. We need more housing. We need to improve transit. Just where we're putting this large amount of new housing at the corner of El Camino and San Bruno Avenue is going to have, in my opinion, a substantial impact to our community. And I'm concerned about that. And I'm sorry, sir, I did have one follow-up question for you of when, in this analysis, how detailed are you in looking at the turning movements with these different driveways and adding another signal? And you're having pedestrians walk, and cars trying to get in, and cars trying to get out, and then there's a signal on El Camino that's going to...people, they don't have a designated turn lane into the project. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
So I'm just imagining as somebody's trying to come out and as a pedestrian or bicyclist is getting by, and the car that wants to come in or go out, they can't?
Yeah. Well, there's computer software to simulate those kind of activities. And what comes out of that is basically a letter grade of how well that particular operation is going to work. And as long as it is within acceptable range, we can conclude that it's not a problem, that it will function properly.
And your analysis included the latest adjustments of the locations of the driveways?
Yeah, absolutely, based on the latest site plan that we looked at. And I should also mention, you mentioned the conflict with the pedestrian and the bicycle. But that's the good thing about this plan, because that's the only conflict that there is, because it's a right turn in, so there's no other conflicting movements with other vehicle traffic. And it's also right turn out.
For coming in.
And that's all, both drivers at El Camino. So those are the easy movements, so to speak. The left turn in, crossing other traffic, that's usually a problem. In this case, since it's right in, right out, it has fewer conflicts and makes the operation work better.
Okay. Or?
So I wanted to go back to a question I made earlier, and I was concerned about some of the comments that was made by one of the commissioners, that there were some lack of plans, lack of communication plans. There were certain things that were not provided to the commission that didn't come to council. And I think, I guess what I'm hearing is possibly that there's things that will come later, right? What's going to happen if this gets approved, and what are the different plans that need to come through in terms of the construction? And we talked about different hours of construction. We talked about if there's complaints, who to go to. So tell me what we could expect, what's missing from some of the comments that she may have made, and I'm not sure if anybody captured those notes.
Yeah, sure. So tonight, we're talking about entitlement, which is really, honestly, the first step in another multi-year process. And the development agreement is up to eight years. So there's frankly a lot to come, but this is the planning entitlement. So the things that were asked about dealt with some, we've touched on some of them. There was a question about a community relocation plan, our business relocation plan. As we've replied, the city doesn't get involved directly in issues between the landlord and the tenants, but we are a resource should they need assistance in certain areas. The communication plan with the residents is something that would be developed closer to issuing permits and starting construction. Affordable housing plan, we have a draft, it would be finalized and recorded closer to construction. So there's actually a lot that really ramps up closer to construction, and there will be entitlements that come back before you, such as the final subdivision map and the official vacation of the streets and the condominium use permit, which isn't being processed right now because the building plans don't have the level of detail. So there will be future council meetings that involve council actions, and then some things happen at the staff level, the permit level. So there's a variety of work that's still to come.
Great. Thank you for the clarification.
I'd like to go back to the findings. We did touch upon the condition for the residents not to park, the new residents to not park in the residential area off-site. We heard today that there is $100,000 available for the parking enforcement, because we all know that without enforcement, you're going to have kind of what we have now. But I'm looking at finding 16, that the accessibility of the off-street parking areas and the relation of parking areas with respect to traffic on adjacent streets will create a hazardous or inconvenient condition to adjacent or surrounding uses. So we've talked about potentially having this approval from the developer to not have their residents park, but we don't have that plan in place yet. So I contend that we're not mitigating that condition, and I have an issue with that finding that it's okay.
So we had a town hall in this room, I believe, on January 23rd, and prior to that, we had a petition that was signed by a number of residents that said, essentially, do something about parking. And there's no silver bullet. It's a multi-pronged solution. And frankly, what we're dealing with is a built environment several years ago that can't accommodate the amount of cars that people drive. And the driveways aren't long enough to accommodate the cars today. The roads were not built wide enough, and some houses don't have off-street parking. And so that is our reality today. What we are trying not to do is to repeat the ills of the past, which is even though all of the evidence says that the market rate tenants do not drive or do not all have cars, I think the statistic is about 80%. The parking that's provided may be 80% full. We wanted the developer to commit to providing one parking space per bedroom. In addition, we are coming back to the city council on July 16th, so in just a couple days, with RPP guidelines for city council adoption. And so the program is in the works. Absolutely, we heard the residents, it's a multi-pronged solution, a residential parking program frankly will not solve the parking issue that we have in our city. It's one prong of a very, very challenging issue. And so do we not approve new development because we don't have a residential parking program? Or do we continue to work toward implementing a residential parking program and work with a developer that has committed to providing substantial parking onsite, 72 parking spaces above what our current codes are, and is voluntarily committing to not allow their tenants to participate in any future RPP recorded, so then we can enforce that and deny it? So I would say that we have done everything we could with the situation that we have today to mitigate the issue, and the developer standing up and would like to make a comment.
Well, I would just say that there's a number of plans that are typical for building permit versus a time of discretionary approval. So you approve the project, XYZ project, you know, in either an EIR or zoning or the project architecture or whatnot, and then there are other things that are done later at the building permit. You don't have a residential parking permit, but we said if you did, that we would make sure that our residents couldn't participate in it, and we said we'd even fund enforcement mechanisms. So at the time of the building permit, we could see if you have that, then we could submit to that and basically exclude ourselves. If you didn't, then you didn't, but I'm assuming you will. We won't be ready to pull the building permit for a year. And then it takes, you know, two years to build. So we're years away from having any residents actually effectuate any of this. But again, we're willing to submit to prior to building permit or prior to occupancy check-ins to see whether the city has developed that, and I'm assuming you will, in which case we will abide by the condition.
I guess, excuse me, the reason for my comment is just that when I read something that says that there's no impact, I just wanted to identify there is an impact, and we don't have something in place to mitigate that. We can get to it, but I just wanted to make sure that that point in the findings didn't seem exactly accurate to me. But now that we're talking it through, I think I'm better off with that. But you'll have to excuse my lack of just...let me rephrase this. I just want to make sure it's right. I've struggled with this project for weeks now, and it's very difficult. I'll let the other, my colleagues go further with their deliberations, but I have some significant problems with the density. I understand it's allowed, but it doesn't have to be approved. in all the meetings I went to, the residents have been very clear. And some of them even stated today that they understand something's going to get built, and they're okay with something being built, just that they don't want something as big, as tall, as dense. But I can say that we have to do something, we have to build something. Just that I'm feeling that where I'm at right now, that I'm not convinced that this is appropriately sized for the location that it's sized for the location that it's in. And adding a grocery store, which is wonderful, just that that has additional impacts to the traffic. So I wrote something down, and this is what I had prepared. And so yes, the transit corridor plan was approved by the council in 2013. There's approximately 4,500 feet on El Camino, 4,000 feet on San Mateo Avenue, 4,000 feet on San Bruno Avenue, and 3,500 feet on Huntington, just off-scale, right? So approximately 1,600 feet of San Bruno is identified in the transit corridor plan. So that 1,600 feet, there's two sides to most of the streets in San Bruno, there's some intersections, but let's just bear with me, there's 3,200 linear feet in the transit corridor plan. This project is approximately 1,000 feet on the west side of El Camino, which is less than 3% of the total amount of frontage in the transit corridor plan. In the transit corridor plan on page 83, table 4-1, shows that 325 units currently exist in the transit corridor plan area, with 720 more allowed in the general plan. The transit corridor allows 1,610 net units over the general plan. So this one development with the 425 units accounts for 26.4% of all the units in the transit corridor plan. And when you look at the net increase of the transit corridor plan over the general plan, that's 890 units. This one project accounts for nearly 50%, 47.8% of all additional units. Put in one of our, near, one of our busiest intersections. There's 155 acres in the transit corridor plan, this piece of property is 5.388 acres. Another, that math is 3.5% of all the acreage allowed in the transit corridor plan, this one project is going to take up only 3.5% of the whole amount. So we're putting all this, all of this housing in one area along El Camino and San Bruno Avenue, one of our busiest, already significantly impacted intersections. So I struggle with that, because, because when you look at the transit corridor plan, they identified three catalytic sites. One of those sites was at the south end of San Mateo Avenue. The other one was at the location of, excuse me, it's late, I'm sorry, over by the train station. And of those sites, none of them reached the scale and mass density of these, of this one project. I don't believe in all or nothing. I'd like to see this project scaled back. And, and if I, if I can ask for a continuance on this project, it's late, we have other things to deal with, it's waited this long, it could wait a little longer. But I also want our community to know that we have to build something here, and we have to be aware of the problems that we are going to continue doing if we don't build something here. So something, if the developer's willing to scale back, I will approve this project. But in its current form, I'm having an issue with it. So I would like to ask for a continuance, and I can wait to hear more questions, because I skipped one, basically, was about the retaining wall that runs along White Way, that I don't think we addressed. And I walked by there a couple of times, and I went by there today, and it's like, we're going to have this amazing new building at some point, and we're going to have this kind of funky, kind of, I don't know the integrity of it, but it seems like on projects that I've been involved with when I was working in Alameda County Water, when developers came through, they made sure their perimeter of their projects looked nice. And so I have concerns about that retaining wall, and I'll leave that question for now, to see if I can get an answer, if there's any plans on that retaining wall. And then after that's answered, I'd like to ask my colleagues for a continuance.
So I don't, I don't want to come to this meeting tonight with a packet of information with, I don't know, how many pages, 800 pages that we got? This has been a project that's been ongoing, we've been aware of it and the details of it for a very long time. But let me start out a little bit with the history of San Bruno. As we all know that, and maybe we don't know this, that this town was a rural town in the 1940s. But there are two things that really changed, the dynamics of San Bruno. And one was World War II, which created the internment at Tann Fran. And through that, thousands of military personnel went through San Bruno on their way from military outposts of the Pacific. This changed San Bruno forever. Many of the military personnel is to try to decide to settle here in San Bruno. So the second event was the change when San Bruno, George Williams purchased Mills Land. And our San Bruno town back in the 40s, with residents in an amount of 6,500 to population of over 35 residents in 1960s, San Bruno has been changing. Along the peninsula, all towns are changing, and San Bruno is way behind the times. Let's talk about homelessness and housing. We have a right, we have an obligation to be able to provide housing in San Bruno. There's a less than 3% available housing. I think our city manager tonight mentioned it, 14 homes available for purchase in San Bruno. But yet, the jobs are coming in here. The last couple of years, South San Francisco alone has created 6,000 new jobs. Why are our streets crowded? Because they're coming from all over places. People are driving two hours to get here, to get, to go to jobs. They want to work here, they want to live here, they want to live in the community. I want my kids to be able to raise families to be able to live here. Right now, that's not possible. Not possible to be able to rent a place because it's not available. And as a council person, it's not about money, because that's not about it, it's about the right thing. Way before I became a council member, I got involved in the city, and I've always been involved, and I've attended in this same room, the transit corridor plan. We had many discussions and roundtables when we were able to give input, and we saw beautiful buildings and high-rises, and we saw what could be of the transit corridor plan. And the same building I'm seeing here, a much uglier versions were what was proposed to us. And we voted for it. 68% of the population of San Bruno voted for the transit corridor, that says we can increase this height limit. That a developer comes and they look at documentation that says you can do this, follow the plans, here's the plans, here's your outlines, here are your guidelines. Who wants to come into San Bruno and develop, and if you have a document that's been approved by the voters in San Bruno, and then we as a council say, oh, no, no, and that document that we approved, the voters approved, nah, we can't support that. This project is all wrong. Why is this project all wrong? This project is beautiful. I have not seen a project like that in the peninsula. Have they listened to the residents? Yes, they have listened to the residents. They've made changes along the way, they've had setbacks, they've dropped height limits. I mean, the backside of this development is actually beautiful for a neighborhood. So, you know, because this project has been around, and I know it's coming my way, I had been looking, and I had been seeing, and I had been looking up and down the peninsula. 21 De Salva Road in San Mateo, it looks to me seven or eight high-rise buildings, it's right behind residential neighborhoods. It goes on and on. 50 Mound Road in San Mateo, huge high-rise surrounded by neighborhoods. 83 Linden Avenue in Milbrae, high-rise surrounded by homeowners, senior housing. 10 Baldwin Avenue in San Mateo, directly next to a residential homeowner. South San Francisco, box developments right next to homes. In fact, there's a senior housing right next to, there's just inches between that building and there's senior housing. It's being done everywhere. But this job, and I think the work that the staff has done, has done an excellent job in making sure that this fits for San Bruno. I'm also a Mills Park resident, and I travel through those neighborhoods, and I know my impact is going to be, that my traffic will be impacted, I realize that. But we have to be able to provide more housing, we have to be able to provide affordable housing. We have to be able to provide what we as a resident of San Bruno have approved. And here, guess what, folks? We can't show up to 12th hour to a meeting, and I know some people have been showing up probably for the last couple of years, but we've got to get involved early, we've got to get involved, we've got to ask the questions. If the transit corridor plan was out there, we had an opportunity to vote and review it and increase housing. So here's what happens. If we didn't pass that back in 2014, what would happen is, the developments that exist, whether it's the corner of San Mateo Avenue and San Bruno Avenue, they wouldn't be developing that, we'd be looking at an ugly bank, we'd be sitting there because it can't afford to develop on that property. What's going to come of this is this the beginning of more developments in the transit corridor plan. It's the vision that the residents had and staff has had for the betterment of San Bruno, keep it in the transit corridor plan. You can't build it up in the Highlands, you can't build it up in, off of, you know, Rollingwood, you can't build it there because they're not close to the transit corridor. This is the perfect location for it. The transit corridor plan, you know, what was it, 1,600 homes? This is only 425 of it. And yes, to your comment, it is a bigger percentage of it, but we're also behind the times. You look at every city along the peninsula, and they have been developing, and where's San Bruno been? You know, what we had to do, we had to focus on a gas man explosion in San Bruno, and that has been a focus for 10 years. We, with the new city manager and new staff, we are focused in making changes and making a difference in San Bruno for the betterment of everybody. We will, do we need to address a shuttle in San Bruno? You bet we need to address the shuttle in San Bruno. Do we need to address bicycle lanes so that we can get to those locations? Yes, we do. And that is in the forefront. Do we need to address a parking permit program? Yes, we do. Do we need to address oversized vehicles or vehicles parked on residential streets for too many days and too many weeks? Yes, we do. We will get there, but we need to address our items one at a time and cross off our list, and do it well, and do it to completion. There have been a lot of great comments, a lot of good questions. I'm sure not every question can be answered tonight, but there have been a lot of questions answered in many different meetings I've listened to, I've watched. A suggestion I have to staff on future developments, a lot of facts could be documented and be brought to these meetings, and it could be hosted online. Will these questions get raised? Let's just post the facts. But I also hear that, well, I hear lies, and I don't feel that's a true statement either. Maybe it's a decision that was made then, but two months later, six months later, things have changed. There's a comment made about apartments or condos. Well, it's very clear tonight that it's probably will start out as apartments, and eventually be condos. But there's policies and procedures that they'll have to follow to submit those plans should they decide to go with condos before they occupy the property. We need housing in San Bruno. You know, 12 to one jobs is the housing ratio in San Bruno. One housing unit for 12 jobs. It's not going to cut it, that won't cut it. I don't make this decision lightly. I make a decision and support a project in San Bruno because it's the right thing to do. I think that if you're a resident in the area of the Mills Park, yeah, it's a big impact. But it's a beautiful impact, and I've seen a lot of developments that aren't even coming close to the development, and how this will fit, and how it will butt up with the neighborhood of, on the backside. I think for the El Camino side, I think it's perfect, and it's exactly what you're going to see. It'll continue. You know, wait for El Camino and South San Francisco when they develop their new community center and police station, it's happening all over the place. The people are coming, the people are living here. We need to be able to provide the housing, and I think that we have, it is our right and it is our duty and our obligation to provide that housing. Thank you.
So with the hour late, I will try to...